This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education on February 13, 2020, to order at 6:30. Our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda. I know we all received our packets, I believe it was last week. First, we have the December 13, 2019 meeting minutes. Second was our January 9, 2020 Board of Ed workshop meetings. Our January 16, 2020 workshop meetings. Which were all Board of Finance, everyone saw that. And then we need to accept the resignation of Mary Iarardi, our world language teacher at the North Haven Middle School. Jennifer Frederick, an English teacher at the North Haven Middle School. I just wanted to add one thing, if I don't have the paperwork. As of when? Now?
As of December 20th, I believe.
Both of them?
Mary Iarardi was the... right after Martin came today.
Okay, so recent, so she's not gonna be there. And, um, oh, then you wrote it down. Excuse me. And the retirement of Jane Sanford, Physical Ed and Health Program Coordinator at the conclusion of this school year. We also have leaving for maternity leave, if she hasn't left already, Caitlin Dwyer, our Grade 1 teacher at Ridge Road School. So before, we may have a motion to approve the consent agenda, the resignation of Mary Iarardi, Jennifer Frederick, retirement of Jane Sanford, and the maternity leave for Caitlin Dwyer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna say that with Jane leaving, that's the end of an era. She, I mean, she's been here for, what, 37 years? I mean, a whole generation. She's probably, I know she's teaching children...
Children.
Children's children. And I've worked with her, this is going back, looking at, uh, here's Looking at You 2000, which was a health...
Yes.
So, and she's always been very pleasant to work with, good nature, good humor.
She's a good person.
Yeah, and I wish her much happiness in her retirement.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. I wanted to say what would happen if we told Caitlin she couldn't take maternity leave. Wish them all the best. I'm very excited to welcome to the Board of Education our new student representative from the junior class, Gia Wannick?
Iwanick, yes.
Iwanick. I wasn't sure if the "I" was silent or not. You wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. So I'm 16 years old, a junior at North Haven High School. In addition to that, I'm a competitive dancer and also a professional. Yes, I spent seven days at the dance studio training. I just auditioned for America's Got Talent. So hopefully I'll be getting that call soon. In addition to that, I'm also a representative of the Miss Connecticut Scholarship Foundation.
Great.
Busy.
Two questions. Are you a good speller or are you...
I'm not, that's because it's spelling bee.
If we have a talent show. North Haven Education Foundation, we're changing to a talent show. Well, welcome to us. Any questions, anything you have, just always reach out.
It's honored to be here, so thank you.
No, thank you. What's dance studio, do you...
Glory jeans studio.
Glory jeans, great. Good for you. Congratulations. And we'll all come to your audition if you want. I don't have a lot to report on my Board of Ed chairperson section. I do want to remind everybody about Phantom of the Opera, February, I'm sure you're gonna bring it up too, but February 28 through March 3.
Uh, 27 through the 1st.
Through the 1st, okay. I had the timing somewhat right. So I think that was something I wanted to do. Also to the board members, you know, we had our, what we call our Board Retreat last week, which I thought was wonderful. I mean, as a retreat, this is what we saw, but it was great for all those that came, and we really appreciated what Jess brought to us. And we wanna do another one so that she can finish up her side. You know, even after all these years on the board, I think several of us had said that there were things that we learned that we weren't aware of. So I thought it was a very good evening. And we will make it a little later though, next time. We want it 2:00 or 5:00, will we?
Promise.
Promise, okay. So that's all I really have. Is there anything that you can think of that I may need to bring up? Nope? Okay. And unfinished business. Is there anyone that wants to bring up unfinished business? Okay, then we can go to the reports of the standing committees, and we'll start with DOT at ACES.
Yes, we had our meeting today, and I think there was two issues that affect us all. One was a discussion about the recruitment and retention of a much more diverse teaching population, hiring teachers. And this is something that ACES is having difficulty with. Waterbury, represent, talked about they're having difficulty, Waterbury, and this is universal. And, you know, we started thinking about this is maybe this is something we need to do on a regional basis, come together. While everybody's trying to vie, vie for the same cluster group, I think we need to think about this as a whole group.
And if I could interrupt you, I have it in my report just while you're on that. The district was notified, I wrote a competitive grant to ACES to get a portion of that minority recruitment grant, and we were allocated $1,200 that we can use in district for recruiting and retaining a diverse educator workforce. So that's nice, we can use it spring in through the fall.
And then the second, actually it was a proposal that we accepted, is the RESC Alliance, there's six RESCs in Connecticut, and they are applying for a statewide database and interactive tool for specialized student transportation. And what this would give, it would be an expansion of an online student transportation database, and the map tool that would be available to every single district. And this would have to do with trying to pull transportation, similar to what we're doing with ACES right now.
A collaborative, yeah.
And actually, two more districts signed on for our group. And it would have to do with providing, well, it was special, it would focus on special ed, transportation to out-of-district schools, but also would include state technical high schools, vocational, agricultural programs. So we did approve that. So that's up the horizon. And they talked, it's been very successful in the western part of the state, where there's smaller school districts, and when you're sending a student to an out-of-district thing, at Jangris in Hartford. The transportation is very, actually, the transportation cost is usually more than the tuition.
Sure.
So that's what we're hoping, that will be available to North Haven, to have that database mapping. It's a mapping tool.
Zoe, I apologize I went over you, but once we're done with standing committees, don't worry. Thank you, I apologize. Curricular instruction and planning?
So besides the two field trips that are on the agenda, we met with Russ Dalai about some new state requirements for graduation, and I'm gonna ask Melinda to talk about them because she's much more well-versed in them than am I.
So I'll do my report now, 'cause I had that as mine, if you don't mind. So as Wes said, at our meeting tonight, Dr. Dalai joined us to provide the group with an update on the 2023 graduation requirements. And that's a state mandate, that's not just, you know, district-wide. Collectively, we've been working to tie these state mandates into our portrait of a graduate, which is the work that we talked about last week. Under this new proposal, students will need 25 instead of the 24 credits we currently have in place. This won't be difficult for us because we're pretty close to it. There's other districts that maybe only have 20 or 22, so that's a greater stretch for them. Additionally, health course requirements will increase from a half a credit to a full credit per the state statute. And to accommodate schedules and teaching staff, we will reduce our PE requirement by a half a credit to kind of balance that out. Currently, we have in District 1 1/2 PE credit requirement, the state statute is only one. If students wanted to take an elective, they could do that after, but this way we stay within two credits between PE and health all around. Another big change that we talked about was the mastery-based diploma assessment component of the regulation. And this is a one-credit learning opportunity for students to demonstrate mastery in a topic or a field of their interest. And we're still trying to define how we will structure that and what it will look like. But it can take on a whole lot of different forms, from a project-based learning, an internship, community service projects, presentations. It's really kind of wide open. We're currently developing the guidelines and communication with other area high schools 'cause no one seemed to have cracked it yet, so Russ and his principal's group is really sharing ideas and strategizing together.
So it's basically independent study?
It is, but we're gonna probably structure it so that it meets the needs of students. Some students may need it to be more of a designated course where somebody is guiding them through each step of it. Then there may be other students who really can do it very independently, and they may just have some check-ins with it. So that's part of the planning piece. The law in and of itself is very open, which is great, 'cause it gives us flexibility, and we wanna make sure that all kids are able to succeed with this. As Russ said, when he was with us in the group, we don't want it to be a barrier to graduation for kids. We want it to be something that's meaningful to them. And in, at our April or May full board meeting, Dr. Dalai will come and we'll really talk about all of these graduation requirements once we've finalized all the specifics and can do a good roll-up to the full group. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of information.
So it's this year's freshmen that are gonna be impacted.
Correct.
So will there be a parent meeting for that, too?
There will be, yep. And we're thinking that their junior year is when we'll really work on the mastery-based piece with them. That's the only real difference. Everything else we have in place, and we're set to go, so. And just one last reminder about kindergarten registration. Everything is on the website, so if you have an incoming kindergartner, just check the website and sign up at the school. Okay, anything else on your report?
The Ellis Island trip, that wasn't approved.
See, and I approved that, and the cheerleading trip to Rhode Island in the summer.
Okay, great. Finance and operations?
I was gonna say, do you have a motion for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the two...
Field trips.
Field trips, I'm sorry. I'm there. Wasn't in my notes. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School field trip to Ellis Island on March 19? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the fabulous North Haven High School cheerleading trip to Rhode Island? Saying that because I saw that on our website, our athletic website, that they have recently, some of our girls made all-team.
And Russ was just telling us, were they sixth or seventh, did they?
Sixth.
Yeah. So congratulations to them. So let me start that all over. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School cheerleading trip to Rhode Island on August 23 through 26, 2020?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, may, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. But I did wanna get that in there. See, I should've wrote down what I wanted to do that I had read, what I had done, and that was fantastic. Finance and operations, Pamela, why don't you go ahead? Do you wanna go ahead?
Um, we discussed the fiscal year 20 budget, and as my report indicated, we do have some concerns with regard to some of our under-budgeted areas, as well as our special education costs, as we've been talking about for the last few months. As you know, we anticipate the first portion of our excess cost grant within the next few weeks. It's usually 75% of the total. And I've been working very closely with Jen Stewart to monitor where students are. We do have some outplacements that are pending, and just the adjustments on the budget overall. So we're watching it very carefully, definitely have taken very aggressive steps to mitigate the impact and put the hard freeze in place so that we're trying to absorb any potential overage of our budget within our existing budget. So stay tuned. That's really all we can do at this point, because it is still early in the year as far as we have to get through the winter. We have a lot of variables within our budget that simply aren't really set right now. So hopefully we'll get there very soon and be able to give you a little bit more information at the next meeting. And we also did discuss insurance. We are trending still below our projections, but we do have some large claims, which is partially why our renewal wasn't as good as we had hoped. But as far as our budget this year, so far, so good, and we're cautiously optimistic it'll continue that way. And lastly, I did share some information that Amanda had asked about, so for the board members who worked in finance, I will pass these around. And the question is with regard to an analysis of the self-funded costs versus what the fully insured costs would be. And I think the board just really wants some kind of assurance that the move to be self-funded really was in the district's favor, and I think we continue to see that it was. They're estimating, this is an analysis done by our insurance broker, Brown &amp; Brown, and they are factoring approximately a $600,000 savings each year between the two. So I do think it was the right move. Of course, we did talk a little bit about risks, but that just kind of comes with the program. And again, we are working closely with the town to try to build the reserve and to monitor it carefully as well. That was our meeting.
Thank you. Goldie, anything on middle school building?
The committee had a meeting scheduled, but I haven't got any information yet from Gary in regards to that. I also mentioned to him about the follow-up. I sent him an email, 'cause the last time we met, I think in November...
We've talked about it.
He had to come in, and, because there were some questions in regards to the presentation he made...
Right.
Late last year, but he hasn't given me a timeline yet. Did you happen to follow up with him?
I did. He hasn't really gotten back to me with some information, but do we want him to come present here, or would you just like some information? 'Cause I kinda posed it either way to him.
I'll leave that to Annida.
Yeah, I think it's up to the board, you know, if he has a lot to share, that he thinks we will question, please comment. Or how about that, ask him to send it to us via email, and then we'll make that decision whether to have him come or not speak to us in the spring.
Just a quick question on that. Are we supposed to accept the middle school building committee project once it's completed? Like, is the board supposed to accept that and vote on it?
Yes, that is part of the state's requirement. Okay, but what happens if we don't accept it? You know, some of these things that we do, you know, I think about things, like, you know, just now, we were accepting retirements and maternity leave of people who wanna resign.
Portable classrooms for everybody.
Yeah, the school just goes away.
Yeah, I mean, what if there's still some issues? Well, I guess if we don't accept it, I mean, I see no reason whatever, it's just a rhetorical question, because what happens? Does that mean we don't get our funding for it?
Yes, that's exactly what it means. And quite honestly, that is why the board, that the board has to accept it in order for it to be closed and finalized, and then the audit begins. Because if there are problems, the board has to make...
And you're really, you're accepting that debt, too, I think.
Yes, accepting the debt, okay.
Do we know when, do we have a timeline for when we're supposed to be doing that?
They still have, I was at the last meeting, they still have invoices outstanding and a couple of other minor things, but it's getting very close, because of course, it wants, the town wants us to wrap it up so that they can go through the audit process and get the remaining...
I remember it took a while for the high school to...
I'm sure, it's a huge project, yeah.
But that's a good question. Would that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And North Haven Education Foundation, Joe?
Yep. So I had a work conflict, so I couldn't get there yesterday morning, but a lot of the meeting was administrative, internal administration committee appointments and things like that. And then the, I guess the bigger news is April 30th is, it's not a spelling bee this year, it's a trivia event, so it's called Be Trivia Wise, and it's April 30th. So I just wanted to put the date out there, have people be aware of it, and I will keep providing more information as it comes through.
Okay, do we, I was unable to come, to go to the trivia program they had at the high school, middle school lots two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So I was away. Does anyone know how that was, how that went?
It was a good turnout.
It was a good turnout, good, great. Okay, thank you. Policy?
Yeah, policy did not meet...
Yeah, we did not meet. We kind of put a couple of things, policy not to meet until we were finished with our financing, you know, doing all of our budget things, and we're also working and getting new things from shipment of Goldenland, too. We'll probably start policy maybe again next month or the following month, for sure. PTA council?
That's me now.
Oh, that's right.
That's right, she passed the torch, so it's me now. So we met on January 29. PTA council board, as well as the board that every single school are looking for people to take leadership positions, so if anybody's interested, please contact the school for which you would like to work with. They have a new committee forum for the road race, which is going to be on April 5, 2020. Let's see. Also, the Connecticut PTA website is looking for people to fill out applications for outstanding administrator or teacher awards, and I have something for each of the schools, what they're doing. Clintonville has their St. Valdrix fundraiser on March 10. Montuise is having a Yankee game fundraiser...
Not the red side.
On April 25 at 1 o'clock. It's $90 for the ticket, a meal, and a Yankee hat. Ridge Road has an ice skating fundraiser on February 28, which includes the skates. Blood Drive on March 6 from 2 to 7, and Shred Day on March 28. The middle school is having a spirit wear and chocolate fundraiser in the month of March. And the high school is having, you mentioned the Phantom of the Opera. Tickets can be purchased online, although I did hear that the Friday and Saturday night shows are completely sold out already. But that could have been, I don't know, that was about two weeks ago, too, so I don't know.
May I interrupt?
Yeah.
I bought my tickets for Thursday night, and believe me, it wasn't sold out, and that was about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
But the best seating was, and I figure by now, they're probably sold out, close to, very close to it.
I can forward the link to buy tickets to the board if you'd like.
Maybe we can get them to do another night?
You never know.
And the other thing that they're actually thinking about is doing a big townwide PTA tag sale, so every one of the, you know, everybody from every school would set up a table, I guess, I don't know, in the high school parking lot, or the high school gym, or somewhere, and have their own little tag sale, whatever that works, so. Anyway, and that's it. Next meeting is March 11.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the standing committee report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, we forgot.
No, I'm gonna go ahead of her. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Actually, I need to go back to both Gia and Zoe, 'cause I don't know, I didn't ask Gia for her report. I was so excited to meet her. So go ahead, Gia.
So for this month currently, course selection for next year is well underway. Students received their papers a few weeks ago, and I'm currently filling mine out, so we're doing pretty good. Few weeks ago, we had our course information night. We changed the format. It's now in the hallways instead of the gym. In addition, Phantom of the Opera is also well underway. Tickets are $15 and can be bought at the main office ahead of time or at the door, space permitting. And then the play runs through February 27 at 6:30 p.m., Friday, February 28 at 7 p.m., Saturday, February 29 at 7 p.m., and then Sunday, March 1, it's a matinee. And then also, unified sports practices are going very well. I'm actually on the team, so I see firsthand how hard the athletes are working. We just had our bowling tournament this past Monday, so it was really fun. Athletes and players are working super hard and having fun. And then senior night for girls' basketball team will be, I think?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow at 7 p.m., and the boys will be on the 24th.
Yeah. And then also for the senior night for fencing is actually tonight. There's, on the 15th, there's ITACI, which I think is Saturday. 24th is also boys swimming and diving. The choirs are actually working very well. We're preparing for the band trip, et cetera. And the select choirs are also getting ready for the band trip, and we have a, we have a performance at Pierpont on next Saturday, the 22nd, so we're getting ready for our first, like, big performance, and also our all-state performance in April that we got invited to.
When you say Pierpont, what do you mean? Where's Pierpont?
So, Pierpont, so it's my first year in select choir, so I don't know why it's called Pierpont, I actually asked, but it's a, it's a church, I'm pretty sure it's in North Haven, that all of the Keishy, the girls choir, might have known. And when with the mixed choir, we perform like our select music that we have, and I'm not, I think it's just any, open to anyone, I'm not exactly sure what...
Yeah, it's at the congregational church.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the jazz ensembles for that, too.
Yes, and the jazz ensemble as well. So that'll be next Saturday at around 6 p.m., I'm pretty sure, not sure of the exact time. And then the freshmen are having, doing their Valentine's Day Grams fundraiser, and also they're having a Polley night, I'm not sure the date for that. And then lastly, the Class 2020 is working now on an apparel fundraiser as our last, like, big fundraiser to, you know, get some more money before prom, and yeah.
Okay, when do prom, they have to go on sale?
That's a good question. I'm just wondering, next week, so I'll know.
And I saw you in the paper for a basketball game recently?
Yeah, yeah, we're doing well. It's pretty exciting.
I said, "Oh, Zoe got ink." Thank you, Bolden, I apologize, thank Mr. Sturck for pointing it out, quietly pointing it out to me. Okay, so now we'll go over to Mr. Sturck's reports.
Good evening, everyone. Although it's only February, it's already February, so I wanted to point out that next year's calendar, Labor Day falls funky. It's actually September 7, which is a week later than it normally falls. So if we keep the calendar how we've always kept it, we would have a September 2 start date for students, and I think teachers will come back, and it's due to August 31st. So it's just something I want the board to think about, 'cause we do vote on the calendar, talk about the calendar in March. So, and I worked it out, and if we start on September 2, the last day of school would be the 14th or 15th, so it's really not a week later, so we're not into the June money or anything like that. So just something for the board to think about for next month.
But before we go on, do we know what other people at ACES is planning?
I haven't heard, I haven't seen ACES calendar yet, or...
Yeah, I think it was, I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
Yeah, let's figure it, 'cause I know sometimes we try and follow that a little bit, 'cause it had the other school districts in there. Do you know when you all are starting school?
No.
No?
Yeah, 'cause they're pretty much all set this month or next month.
Okay, all right.
So the Next Generation Accountability Reports were released for all districts in the state, and overall, North Haven continues to make steady growth across the district. The state categorizes schools by ranking them 1 through 5, 1 as being the highest. Both Ridge Road and North Haven Middle School moved back up to a category 2 this year, and Clintonville is recognized as a school of distinction for high growth for all students and high growth for high-need students, in both in math, so really great. And I just wanna spend one minute talking about the science component of the accountability reports. This is the first year the science was included in the matrix, so it factors into our scores. And students are assessed statewide in 5th grade, 8th grade, and 11th grade using the new Next Generation Science Standards, called NGSS, they always have an acronym. So our new K-12 science coordinator, Paris Godbout, who's doing a wonderful job, brand new to us this year, has been working with Melinda, our math and ELA coordinators and teachers, to ensure there's elementary time in that packed schedule for science. And also at the elementary level, we have incorporated mystery science, which aligns to the NGSS. And at the secondary level, Paris is working with teachers around their curriculum and expectations to ensure we're meeting the science needs. We're also implementing practice science experiences, starting in 5th grade, kinda like the IAVs we do for ELA and for math for the S-PAC, so the students are familiar with the test format, and it's not... And it's not just that they're taking the test, they're interacting with it, they're having discussions with peers and with teachers, so just not take the test and, you know, let it go after that, it's actually worthwhile in doing that. North Haven High School was just honored by the College Board for Computer Science Female Diversity Award. The excerpt said that we are one of 639 to be recognized out of 20,000 institutions. So I thought that was really great to bring up. And I just want to follow up to an email I sent to families earlier this week around the coronavirus. The district continues to work with Quinnipiac Valley Health Department and other state agencies to provide us with guidelines, support, help us answer any questions that may arise. I've also reached out just yesterday to our district physician, whose name is Dr. Robert Nolfo, to get his insight. He hasn't gotten back to me, nor have I. It's a quick turnaround, but just to see if there's anything out there that we're not seeing. At each of your places, there are PTA gifts. I know you need to have brought it up a few weeks ago about getting, gathering what the PTA has done for our schools over the last three years. So this is what the principals submitted. And we're going to go over it at admin council later this month, just to get a better, wrap our heads around it a little bit more.
Yeah, I just look like, as we look at this, as I mentioned to you, we're missing the numbers from Montuise, Ridge Road, and Middle School. And the middle school, I like those numbers, because some of these are big ticket items. And I also want to remind people that even if it's a gift to, from a PTA, it has to be approved by the Board of Education if it's over $2,000. So that's just something I think that we need to.
I think it's 500.
I think it's 500.
Oh, 500, okay. Let's get that clarified, and maybe that's something you could bring up at PTA council. Once we get all those numbers. Thank you for getting that better.
And speaking of gifts, so the board is being presented with two separate and generous donations tonight. The first is donation of art supplies from storytellers, photographers. The list of supplies was in all of your packets. The donation is valued at $9,797. And the second donation is a piano from our own Peterson family. Mr. and Dr. Peterson. The donation is valued at $1,000. So since each is over $500, board approval is needed to accept the art supplies and the piano.
So may I have a motion to accept the donation of art supplies from storytellers totaling an approximate value of $9,797? So moved? Second? Any discussion? And I'd just like to say about storytellers, they were the district photographer for many, many, many years. And I would like to thank them for all that they did for us over the years. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the donation of a piano from our own Mr., Dr. Peterson and her husband? Rob, so Mr. and Dr. Peterson are donating a piano to us with an approximate value of $1,000. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very disappointed, I can't go to your house anymore, and you won't be playing.
I never did. Never did, I'll be playing for two years and then, it's long gone.
Thank you very much. Just want to say thank you very much for doing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on our list is our Assistant Superintendent's report.
And I'm all set, because I shoved in the others.
Okay. Jen Stewart, Director of Student Report.
So last Thursday night, we had our first preschool transition night to share information about kindergarten parents, and we had, five families came to the event, so I was happy about that for our first one. Our college transition night for the high school, an email blast went out, and it's set up for March 3rd at 6:00, and I'll send another email blast out probably two days before. I was also approached by Sturck and the Bureau Chief of Special Ed for the state for our district to participate in step-by-step training, which is facilitated by Dr. Stetson. Sturck funds the entire training, so there's no cost to the district.
May I ask, what is Sturck?
Sturck, it's our, it's like our state resk that provides services for us. We do a lot of PD through them.
Yeah, it's a resource center.
Special education resource.
So Step-by-Step for Inclusive Schools is a system-wide model for improving the quality and amount of time students spend in inclusive settings. And some of the benefits are effective strategies for all learners, increased class support in general ed classrooms for students, positive school climate, and efficient use of staffing to provide services for students with disabilities. So each building is represented with a team of four to six members. It's the general ed teacher, special ed teacher, the principal, a PPS and/or counselor. And after the training, we get like in-text, in-house support for two times between now and June. And we get to implement the action plan, and then we can move it forward for the next year.
Director of Finance and Operations?
I covered the finances for fiscal year, but I just had a couple of other things to add. Our W2s, 1099s, and 1095s were all issued within the federal and state timelines. And as you probably may recall, we've been without a payroll clerk now for almost eight months. We have finally been able to post for the physician, and we're hoping to start interviewing within the next couple of weeks. So please hope for us that we end up with a really strong candidate. And lastly, I am working on the RFP for our food service management company. It is due this year. It is to our advantage, I guess, because I understand there's like 30, over 30 districts next year who are going out to bid, and there's only about less than 10 this year, I think. So it's a very comprehensive and time-consuming process, and everyone has heard me whine about it a bit, but it's really not terrible. It's just a lot of information to put together. So I'm probably about three quarters of the way and hoping to finish it up next week. And I share it with you, not only informationally, but it will have to come to the board for final approval. And there's an entire timeline I had to work out, so it will probably come to you in your June meeting. I don't think it'll be before then, but by June 30th, we do have to have a contract in place, and so it's an estate. So I think we'll be fine working within that timeline.
Okay. Thank you. Next side of the board comments? Does anyone have any public comment for the board tonight?
Oh, I just forgot, I actually, it slipped my mind, the prom bid is actually $60, $65 this year, so I'm going to fund this year to keep it low, and, you know, keep it at a good price.
Good, that's good. Now you know, after all this time, where I would, where I was going about the prom bid. And that has been our goal to try, hopefully that you guys can keep them low.
Keep it at that low price for the next year.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss negotiation strategies around the upcoming transportation contract and the professional clerical union contract, as well as to invite Superintendent Sturck into the session?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn the February 13, 2020 Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all for your time tonight, we'll see you soon.